If I could, I'll go ahead and call our meeting to order. I appreciate everyone being here this evening. First item on our agenda is to call our meeting to order and establish a quorum. We have all of our board team here this evening, so thanks to everyone for being here on this nice, cool afternoon. Our next item is our invocation. We're pleased to have Bill Proctor with us, Senior Pastor of the First Presbyterian Church, and a huge supporter of our school district. I know he worked on our long-range planning group, and thanks for all your work on that, and really for being such a great supporter of our district, so thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you for the invitation to open our meetings not with prayer, so ladies and gentlemen, let us pray together. God of goodness and grace, I pray this evening for the good people who serve on this school board and for the administrators, for they do have an impossible task. They are charged with making sure every student enrolled in the SISD receives an outstanding education. They are charged with making sure that only the best and brightest of teachers are hired. They are charged with maintaining multiple school buildings and making sure that they are the best educational settings as possible, while at the same time, they are also charged with spending as little taxpayer dollars as possible. Help them and guide them in this impossible task, I pray. I pray for coaches and others in the athletic department who will soon be back at work with preseason training. I pray for teachers who are even now preparing for the start of another academic year. I pray for school administrators who don't really get a summer off, but who continue to do the work that a school district of this size requires. Now I pray for tonight's meeting. May the agenda go quickly, may every side be heard, and every decision be fair and reasonable. Finally, Lord, it's hot, really hot. Only You can bring the relief we need, so I ask You to do so and send us the gift of rain and cooler weather, for You alone are the giver of every good gift, and so we give You our thanks and our praise. Amen.
Thank you so much. Go ahead, Dr. Detloff.
Mr. Lehman, I do want to add, I know Reverend Proctor, we mentioned, is a great supporter, but we also share another commonality. He and I both had the privilege, or some call it the privilege, to be a resident of Luckett Hall in Sherman, Texas, at Austin College. Luckett Hall, the residence facility, was built in 1896, and so we have a commonality that Reverend Proctor and myself both were residents of Luckett Hall at some point in our careers. So, thank you, sir. Go Ruse.
I was gonna say, what is y'alls? You have a kangaroo?
They're kangaroos.
You make some special noise or anything?
Yeah. You didn't deserve that, did you? Thank you. Our pledges, since our students are out, I'll lead us in our pledges if everyone would stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
So, before we do our recognitions, let me read our script for this evening. Good evening and welcome. This is President of the Board of Trustees of the San Angelo Independent School District. I'd like to welcome all who are present at tonight's regular board meeting, and also welcome those of you who might be watching this tape on our public access channel, Channel Four. We appreciate your interest in our students. All items that we've discussed at our meeting this evening have been posted as required by state law. Also, as you may be aware, our board meets a minimum of two times per month, and most, if not all, of the items on our agenda this evening have been previously discussed in an earlier pre-agenda board workshop. As members of the San Angelo Independent School District's Board of Trustees, we're here to set goals, listen to reports from the superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the school district. Please keep in mind that our meeting is a meeting of the Board of Trustees held in public and not a meeting of the public. However, with that in mind, we have an item on every one of our meeting agendas that allows anyone present who wishes to speak to our board team an opportunity to do so. I will make certain that we give everyone an opportunity to speak on any item not listed on our agenda. Additionally, prior to taking any votes, I'll ask audience members if they would like to make any comments. Anyone wishing to make comments on any agenda item should do their best to limit their comments to three to five minutes. In compliance with state law, these proceedings are recorded and will become a part of San Angelo Independent School District's permanent legal record. In order that the tape might adequately reflect the proceedings, I ask that you please refrain from talking while others might be speaking, and I also ask that I remind my fellow board team members to please turn off or silence their cellphones at this time. Again, it's a pleasure to welcome you to tonight's meeting. Thank you for taking the time to join us here this evening. We appreciate your interest in the activities of our students and the business of the school district. So, let's move forward with item four, which is our recognitions, and I'm gonna turn that over to Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, President Lehman, Dr. Detloff, members of the board. Tonight, it is my great pleasure to honor members of our local media who have been strong partners with San Angelo ISD over the past year. These distinguished honorees understand that they have the power to shape community attitudes about public schools, a responsibility that they each have taken very seriously. San Angelo ISD's media honor roll is a way for us to recognize fair and balanced reporting about our school district. Each of tonight's honorees are advocates of the district, advocates for our children, and advocates for our educators. So, right now, I'd like to introduce to you the 2018 Media Honor Roll recipients for SA ISD, and I would like to ask Dr. Detloff to step down here and help me pass these out. We're gonna go through them one by one, kinda have you each stand up here, and then we're gonna get a group photo at the very end. So, we're gonna begin with Foster Communications. The honorees for Foster Communications are Fred Key. He's currently out of the country, unable to be here tonight. Also, I don't see Rick Mantooth either. I think he may have had a conflict in his schedule, but we do have Jeff Rothman here, and I'm gonna give Jeff all three of those certificates to take back. So, come on up, Jeff. Here's Jeff's. Jeff's on top. We'll do a group at the end, too, so, thank you. We'll have you stand right up. Yeah, just stand right over there. Thank you very much. From the Standard Times, we'd like to recognize Michelle Gattin. From the publication Conexión, we'd like to recognize Jim Sanchez. And lastly, from KLST, we'd like to recognize David Wagner. We'd like to have all you guys up there with Dr. Detloff and have a group photo real quick. Thank you very much. I find it kinda interesting that most of these folks here are used to taking the pictures, so they had to pause a little longer. That may have been a little uncomfortable for them, but thank you very much for being honored.
Derek, Jim has a number of his family members here with him if they would like to come up.
Yes. Mr. Sanchez, if any of you guys wanna take some group photos with the folks that came with you, we can definitely do that. Come on up. Thank you, Mr. Lehman.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, I don't have to. I just thought if you'd like to, that'd be great.
Absolutely.
Especially all those beautiful young ladies.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, Jim, you can't show favorites. Everybody has to stand right next to you.
Okay. Yes. Yes. Thank you. One more? Oh, absolutely. Well, let Mr. Sanchez say something real quick.
Thank y'all so much for this opportunity to do this, because it's a special recognition, because I'm always behind the camera, so you never see me, and somebody always says, you know, "How come you're not in the picture?" I say, "Well, somebody has to take the picture." And one last thing I want to say to everybody. My mom passed away last Thursday, and we buried her today, and my mom had a fifth-grade education, and she was big on reading, so Dad and Mom gave me an opportunity to get an education, and they poured their lives into me, and my mom was so proud of me to get an award previously for Conexión, so thank you very much. I appreciate y'all. God bless you.
Yes, just real quick, I wasn't sure we were gonna have Jim with us today, so I actually had a part written that he wasn't gonna be able to make it. We were gonna have someone receive it on his behalf, so very glad that he could get here with the tough circumstances that he had to experience today. That's the end of our Media Honor Roll. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I think our board team also wants to personally thank all of y'all, each one of y'all, for the positive way in which y'all cover our district. You know, I read a lot of articles from other newspapers and things that are sent to me, and, you know, it's not always, you know, they're not always taking the right approach, you know, so, and I'm not saying that everything about our district is always perfect, but I think y'all always have a really level-headed and provide, you know, fair coverage, so thank y'all for doing that, and that's really important as we continue to try to work and make our district the best it can be for all students. So, thank y'all for being here, and thank y'all for all y'all do to publicize that. We appreciate that very much. Okay, we're gonna move forward to item five, which is reserved for anyone wishing to make public comments on items not on our agenda this evening. Anyone wishing to do so should come forward. If not, we'll move forward to item six, our minutes. Do we have a motion to approve our minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion for Mr. Dinnell and a second for Mr. Hernandez to approve our June 11, 2018 Special Finance and Pre-Agenda Meeting, also our June 18 Regular Board Meeting, and then we followed our June 18 Regular Board Meeting with a training meeting with Region 15. So, does anybody have any questions or comments concerning our minutes from our board team? Any public comment? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is reports. I think we have an update from Dr. Ritter on our athletic progress, so we're gonna let Jana take over at this particular time. Thanks for, thanks, Jana.
Absolutely. He's rolling my prop up here. So, we wanted to roll out to you and show you our official, final product of our learner profile tonight, and this is what is going to be proudly displayed here in our boardroom, in our offices, and in our classrooms across the district. This, again, is the work of over 250 teachers, administrators, other educators, school board members, we, for over a year's work, that helps us to really focus on prioritizing, developing our students into those four areas that we highlight always. So, we have communicator, collaborator, critical thinker, and creator. And as we move forward with this being the lens through which we approach everything in our district, we're also developing an educator profile, which we are almost, we almost have in final form as well, and that's very exciting, because it helps us to, it's funny, because once we had this, that became very clear. If we want to help support our students in getting them here in these areas as a future writing learner, then what is it that we as educators need to be? What are the attributes that we need to be showing and how we support our students in everything that we do, in every level, regardless of who that person might be on a campus or at the central office level, even school board members? As we move forward with helping to support our students in the learner profile, we just know that it's very important for us to identify those attributes, and we're gonna be hearing a lot more about that. We're excited to roll this out with all of our teachers at convocation, and they've seen it, but this final version of it is now ready to be published in our campuses, so that's exciting. So, along the notes, so now, when we have our academic updates, I'll always do it through this lens. I want us to continue to remember that this is what it's all about. It's about our learner profile and what we are doing to help support our kids in their learning in the classrooms, which is about what all of us are here to support. I wanted to update you on the progress of our literacy initiative in our elementaries, and through the data that we have been receiving and really looking at over the summer with those reading levels, through our learner profile, knowing that we need to follow our students individually and customize that education for them, and the individualization of their reading, their reading education specifically. You know, we have students who come into our classrooms at all different levels, and a lot of students who come in who are reading at a lower level than we would like to see them read, below grade level. So, we addressed this and said, "We really need to be focusing on literacy," and with your support, we have started that initiative. We've had one year under our belts now, and we are so excited about the progress we're seeing. Just to, well, first of all, to explain what guided reading is in an elementary classroom, so a teacher assesses every student in her classroom or his classroom, determines the reading level of that student based on what national norms say where they should be. And again, kids will be all over the place, walking in the door. And so, through guided reading, which is where the teacher then works with students at their individualized level, working with them in small group instruction and one-on-one with a customized plan for that student, then the child really starts to make gains like we've never seen before. So, we have gains like, and I'm just gonna highlight three campuses and three different grade levels, just to give you an idea. So, in kindergarten at Bradford, our students at Bradford in kindergarten showed a 52% gain in their reading from the beginning of the school year. That means the kids who walk in the door are showing that kind of miraculous growth. In first grade at Lamar Elementary School, a 42% gain, and in second grade at Goliad, a 40% gain. These are just the, these are the results that we're seeing from this targeted, very focused, customized instruction that you're supporting, and we're so appreciative of. Our next steps in this this next year, we're moving some into middle school, as you know, but with elementaries, we're able to use instructional material allotment funds to provide balanced reading literacy libraries at every elementary school across the district. So, we just released that information to our principals last week, and they're very, very excited about this, because now they see the progress and actually what the results are of us focusing on this. So, we thank you so much for your support, and we look forward to future reports about that.
Thanks, Dr. Ritter. Questions for?
Did those, I guess, the numbers you just said?
Yes.
At 52? That includes the comprehension part and all that, right? I mean, all that?
Mm-hmm. It's everything showing comprehensive growth. Yeah. And there are, in some of these cases, one particular campus, the students walked in, and none of the students were walking in the door on grade level, and by the end of the year, the progress that had been made was just phenomenal. And so, you know, some of them are not quite there, but we're seeing growth with every single child. There's not a child that we're not seeing growth with.
Other questions?
Anything else?
I'm looking forward to being updated monthly on, along our learner profile, so thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes, future ready, that's right. Thank you so much.
Sure, thanks, Dr. Ritter.
Dr. Ritter, before you step down, I just wanna thank you and your staff and many of the administrators and leaders in this room for their efforts. We know that reading and writing is really the cornerstone of an academic foundation, and when our students have reading proficiency, that's going to promote them up through the grade levels, and we will see that success on other formative assessments and statewide assessments as they continue that growth. So, reading is critical, and it is certainly the foundation, and I believe we have started this effort thanks to you and your staff, and it's exciting to see that growth. We also know that, you know, when kids are communicators, collaborators, creators, and critical thinkers, that their success rate in, as being citizens and employees will soar. So, thank you for doing this, and we appreciate the lens that you guys are focused on for our kids.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Detloff.
I was just gonna say, thank you for, I like what Bill just said. He called it the four Cs rather than the three Rs that we have to hear people say all the time, so we replaced it with the four Cs, so thank you.
Okay. Our next item is, reports is item C. This is a public hearing for after-school childcare services provided by YMCA, and Ms. Hollihan's gonna help us with that.
Thank you. Board, audience, this is a required public hearing for the San Angelo YMCA After-School Program, which began in 1989, 29 years ago. We talked about that a little bit at the pre-agenda, and we thought it was about 15 years, but they told me today, 29 years ago. The YMCA After-School Program gives working parents peace of mind by providing supervised care for their children by a professional staff team. The after-school program practices the four core values of caring, honesty, respect, and responsibility in all of their activities, indoor and outdoor, homework time, arts and craft, games, and much more. A healthy snack is also provided. This program is licensed through the Texas Department of Family and Protective Services. The YMCA program provides after-school care for all of our elementaries and our Head Start campuses onsite. Registration opened July 5, and can be completed at the YMCA. Additional information can be found on the YMCA website, www.YMCASanAngelo.org. We appreciate the continued partnership with YMCA and their services they provide for our students, parents, and community. Are there any questions?
Certainly, their brochure indicates that they have scholarships available, so.
Yes, sir.
You know, it's provided for all, and, you know, kinda pay as they can afford to pay, and if they can't afford to pay, then there's some opportunity for scholarship. And it's on all campuses, which.
Yes, sir.
At least initially, I know that wasn't always available on all campuses.
That's true.
So, we kinda had some bussing from one campus to another, so now it's on all campuses as well as our Head Start and Early Head Start, so I guess just our Head Start. No, Early Head Start, too?
Not at Early Head Start, at our Head Start.
Okay. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, that was my question. You said it's gonna be at all the schools, 'cause I know Reagan.
They used to be bussed. Reagan students would be bussed to the YMCA.
'Cause they didn't have a lot of kids participating at the time.
Correct, but last year, they opened it up on that campus, so. Okay, thank you.
And this, is this a required twice, or do we determine if it was a one-time requirement or a two-time requirement?
Ms. Casey Atkins from YMCA said one time wasn't enough.
Okay. So, we can change our board agenda item that says this is our one and only, okay, thank you. All right, let's move forward with consent items A through E. Do we have a motion to approve consent items A through E?
Move to approve consent items A through E.
We have a motion. We have a motion from Mr. Parker and a second from Dr. Kingman to consider, I mean, on our consent items, consent item one is considered donations. We had a very generous donation from Jean and Mary Lou Luss, so we appreciate that. That's item A. Item B is considered superintendent's recommendations for personnel for school year. These are in addition to the ones that we approved at our pre-agenda workshop last Thursday, so if anybody has any questions about that, please discuss that now with Matt. Item C is considered bids for Child Nutrition Department for 2018-2019 school year. This is bids for paper and chemical supplies. Item D is considered policy review session recommendations and instructions for all regarding local policies. This is a policy update that we did to try to make sure all of our policies, we're doing what we say we're doing, our policies, so we're making some adjustments to those, and then we'll send them to Tazby for a final review, and then we'll, in turn, see those again as board members and be able to ask questions and make additions to any policy that we might choose to do so at that time. And then item E is considered district innovation, policy recommendations and instructions, again, local policies that we deal with, and we're having those updated. So, any other questions about, or would anybody like to further discuss items A through E on our consent agenda? If not, all in favor, our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Next item is to consider our bill's accounts and financial statements for June of 2018.
Move for approval.
We have a motion for Mr. Dinnell and a second for Mr. Hernandez to approve our bill's accounts and financial statements for the month of June 2018. Do we have any board comments or questions concerning our bill's accounts or financial statements?
Mr. Lehman, just a note to the general public viewing on Channel Four, that we've reviewed all these reports previously in our pre-agenda meeting at length, and also, for those watching at home, if you'd like to review those reports, all of them can be found online at our website, sisd.org. If you click on one of the subheadings marked District, you'll find a tab marked Financial Transparency. All these reports, including our checkbook, are online for your review if you'd like.
Thanks, Bill. Any other comments or questions concerning our bill's accounts and financial statements? Any public comment? If not, all in favor, our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is to consider replacement of San Angelo Independent School District's internet firewall filter, and Ms. Doyle helped us a lot with this. Oh. Oh, thank you. We did skip one. Let's go back to that. I marked, I got a little happy marking my X's here. We're gonna consider our proposed amendment for the district's official budget to the general fund. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move for approval of that adjustment.
We have a motion from Mr. Dinnell and a second from Mr. Parker to approve our amendment to the district's official budget and the general fund. This is moving, making a number of changes that don't affect any, our budget in any way, and then we're moving $1.7 million, is that what it is?
$1.92.
$1.92, okay. $1.92 million from our fund balance into our general fund to cover security equipment that we've purchased as part of our security update. Do we have any board comment or questions concerning our motion? Any public comment? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Okay, Sharlan, you're up.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight, I come to you to discuss the proposal to replace our internet firewall and filter. What a firewall is, is it protects our school district's network and computer technology devices from the outside world, so from other networks, from users outside of the district. There are many items outside of the district that would like to try to get into our network and access our data. We have lots of sensitive data, for instance, student and financial records, staff records, and so we have a firewall in place that protects us and blocks us from the outside world, trying to block out the spam and malware from utilizing our network to propagate that to other users as well as stealing our data. In addition, we have, because we receive federal funds, we're required by law to have a internet filter in place. The filter filters inappropriate content. We decide the filtering level based on our district's needs, so especially, the main things that we filter are porn, malware, inappropriate sites, sites that would have viruses and so forth on them. Our current network infrastructure is, we have two gigs of internet bandwidth, and we have over 21,000 in-user devices that are SASD-owned. In addition, we allow our users to bring their own device and connect to our Wi-Fi and access the internet. Our current internet filter and firewall is a combination box. It's about four years old, and due to the large increase of devices that we added this last school year, as well as. Our current internet filter and firewall is a combination box. It's about four years old and due to the large increase of devices that we added this last school year, as well as the large increase in the usage, which is a great thing to have, we want our users using the, the devices and technology, we are currently maxing out our current system. And so, we experienced some internet interruptions at the, near the end of the school year and so we began exploring options to, of what could we do? Could we upgrade the system? Could we replace the system? I survey, sent a survey out to two different listservs across the state, asked for feedback and info from other school districts. We reached out to a number of vendors, reviewed a number of technical articles. One of the ones recommended to us was Palo Alto. It's one of the high, highest rated firewall systems in the technical industry. So, we worked with a vendor to get a demo Palo Alto system and we demoed it at the end of the school year and had very good luck with it. My staff was very pleased with the results it gave us and the use of it and some of the things that it showed us that we weren't able to see with our current system. Then we proceeded to work on getting quotes. We solicited quotes through our co-ops that y'all have approved for, for us to utilize. We got seven different types of quotes across three different products with multiple different options to them and our recommendation is for us to replace with a Palo Alto system. They gave us a quote on, a one-year system would be a little over $163,000 and then it would have, after, and it included one year of support. After that, the support would be $69,428. But they also offered us a three-year option that was $231,705 and that's actually our recommendation because that, at that level, we actually get a year of support free. So essentially, we're getting three years for the price of the system plus two years of support. The Palo Alto system also provided us 30 districts as a sampling of customers in the, of ISDs in the, in the state of Texas. We reached out to several of them. They were, all the ones we reached out to had higher capacity and higher bandwidth than we do in more, larger size and all of them were very positive. In addition, Tom Green County here in San Angelo utilizes the Palo Alto system. And so, the reason that we're coming to y'all with asking for approval to purchase this, this summer is the vendor is offering us a very good discount that they are, they've said they will only offer it to us through the end of July because their fiscal year ends in July. And so they have some aggressive discounts that they're offering right now. In addition, we would like to replace the system as soon as possible so that we're less time interfering, interrupting our end-users once we get the school year going and the vendor has already told us that they would be very aggressive with getting the system here and getting it in place. Any questions that I can answer for you?
Any questions for Ms. Doyle? So, how aggressive is aggressive?
Gilbert, can you help me with that? This is my network manager, Gilbert. Was it, he'll come up here and help. He was, he's, he was talking with the vendor while I was on vacation and so he can help with the.
I'm just curious about how quickly they'll have it implemented.
Are you referring to the, the pricing?
No, no, not the pricing, the actual.
Oh.
When will they have it installed?
They told us that they would provide a technician here for three days. They would keep it open so that we could get implemented before the school starts, which they knew that was our goal, so they have committed to making the resources available.
Okay. Other questions, Bill?
So, Ms. Doyle, this is a, this is, it's a complete replacement of our system and not a repair of.
Correct.
Our existing system and, and my understanding is our existing system is either at or beyond its capacity.
Yes, we have maxed out our current system. We did look at the option of upgrading our current system and the cost of that upgrade was about the cost of what this system is and, but this system provides us a number of additional features that our current system does not provide us and what, as well as this one is much higher rated in the industry than the current system we have. And so that's why we were leaning towards this one, is those additional features and additional security levels that it provides being at this, at pretty close to the same price.
Okay, probably more, an updated system overall?
Yes.
Thank you.
Do we have an estimate on how many end-users this system is capable of?
It, it has the capacity to go up to 10, 10 gigabytes of internet, so five times where we're at right now. So, it, the, it will depend on how fast we grow in usage and how fast we grow in adding devices, but right now it, it would be five times the size of where we're at currently.
Charlene, I want to confirm, I asked a question similar to this in our, our pre-agenda, but just want to confirm. So, we are adding additional devices, obviously multiple devices every year, thousands of devices, so this firewall will not only help that, at the same time, there, and prevent inappropriate sites from popping up for our students, but on the staff component as well, my hunch is that this protects from identity theft. There's a lot of confidential and privileged information from all of our employees. Would this, is this a protection for that as well?
Yes, so now nothing is 100%. I, I will use that.
We've learned that, yeah.
Caveat, you know, there's been entities, large and small, across the nation or across the world that have had identity theft, but it does block some of those things that would try to get in here to steal our data. And so now it doesn't keep an end-user from clicking on something or filling in something where they provide the data themselves, 'cause some of them are very, what is, I'm trying to think what the right term is, where they look very legit and so the end-user says, "Oh, yeah, I'll go ahead and put my bank account information in that." I had one this morning that I sent to our finance department that said, was a, a warning from one of our vendors that said, "Hey, we're aware, there's some people, there's some entities trying to spoof us. Please do not change your account info if you get an email like this." So, yes, it, it tries to block many of those. It is, all filters and firewalls are continuously updating because it is changing by the hour, by the minute out there, but nothing's 100%, but yes, it, it does try to block as much of that as possible that is inappropriate or is dangerous to, to coming into our network.
Other questions for Ms. Doyle? So, funding source, it's not budgeted, so our funding source would be?
Jack.
Okay.
In the end, it could be fund balance, but if, you know, if we have leftover funds, we'll move it in there and take care of it.
Okay.
Does our current system have recurring costs?
Yes, sir.
What is that at?
It is currently about $24,000 right now. Yeah, the, the, what the recurring costs cover is those updating, those signatures of, about the malware, virus, all those different type of signatures of the, the bad content essentially, as well as technical support that is high priority response because of the nature of, of this type of device. It, if we have an issue, we need immediate response from our vendor, so it's a high level of response time from the vendor.
One last question, Charlene, I don't know if you can answer or not, but this system is five times larger than the one we have in place right now?
Yes.
Maybe the last two years, what's our capacity or what's our usage grown from?
So, we.
2016 to 2018, maybe? Just, I don't know if you can tell me or not.
Yes, I, so I can, I'll get ballparked. So, we were at 500 meg of internet, I want to say three years ago.
Okay.
Then we went to a gig and then now we've gone to two gig. And our device count has drastically grown, so when I came here 14 years ago, we were at 5,500 devices and we are now at over 21,000.
So, at three years, the, the usage has quadrupled?
Yes, and that's thanks, which we're gl, very glad for, is our curriculum department and our instructional technology and my support, my team supporting the users of encouraging that usage, giving them resources to utilize technology in our curriculum and giving them ideas of ways to use it and, and our users are becoming much more comfortable with it. So, as they come, become more comfortable, that usage continues to increase.
Okay, thank you.
We expect with our current growth that we will, three years, this will still be adequate.
That's what my hope is.
I mean, that's, I think, what we're trying to, is like.
Yes.
In three years, we're, we will be adequately supported.
That's, that's my hope, yes. Based on, this one we've had for four and so based on how we've been growing, yeah, my hope is that we'll at least go three, if not four to five.
Charlene, correct me if I'm wrong, kind of the two factors that I've heard that play a part into the volume is the type of devices that are accessing, so some devices require more energy and more bandwidth than others.
They, they talk on the network a lot more, yes, and, and in some cases, they use more internet bandwidth because they don't store their stuff locally. They are continuously going back and forth on the internet.
And then the other part of that is, as our curriculum department works with the curriculum and starts using more open-ended resources, so you're streaming more video content, those kinds of things as part of the instructional materials instead of just a textbook, that could play a part. So, you could really see things ramp up because of the types of devices that are put in place and then what we're doing with those devices in the classrooms.
And to add to what Matt just said, more and more resources are now having video content in them, where even three years ago, a lot of resources didn't have that much video in them and over the last three years probably, we've saw, seen the amount of video embeddedness in re, products, even websites you go to, it's very popular for them to auto-load a, a video in the corner in the ads. All that increases your traffic and increases your bandwidth usage.
And can we, using this, can we control, like you bring your own devices versus SASD devices and their bandwidth usage?
Yes, we can prioritize bandwidth access. We have to be careful in that because there, there are many, many resources that our teachers use, so we, we try not to limit something just randomly. We try to be very strategic, mainly it's vir, things that are malware, virus, inappropriate content, and then we take the feedback from instructional technology and our principals of if there's something else they want, either less priority or blocked completely, like it's interrupting the learning environment or they don't want it certain hours of the day, kind of deal. But yes, that, the system allows us to do some prioritization.
Does this bring us, does this, I guess, does this bring us up to date?
Yes.
We're not behind.
Yes, this is a, an up-to-date system.
Up-to-date system.
It is, and it's one of the top-level types of systems on the market.
Okay.
Based on, uh, what is? Gartner report, if you've heard of Gartner, it's one of the hot, top-rated in the Gartner analysis.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? So, that looks like our motion needs to be, and I guess I'll make that for us, considering a firewall filter device and that, the price of that is $231,705 and that includes all the hardware installation training and three years of support and updates.
Correct.
So, is there a second to that motion?
A second?
So, we have a motion from Mr. Lehman, a second from Mr. Gallegos to take our administration team's recommendation and approve the replacement of our current internet filter and firewall system. Are there further questions from our board team? Any public comment? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes.
Thank you all very much.
Thanks, Charlene, thanks Gilbert, thanks for your help with that.
Thanks, Gilbert.
Our next item is guidelines for high school diploma, alternative requirements. Ms. Hollahan.
Thank you. Board members, last legislative session, Senate Bill 463, opened an opportunity for students who entered ninth grade prior to 2011-2012 school year that did not meet the passing standard for one portion of the tax, Texas Assessment of Knowledge and Skills, to qualify to graduate and receive a high school diploma. Under Senate Bill 463, new state guidelines have come about and students can receive a diploma if they've met performance standards on an alternative assessment, perform satisfactorily, satisfactory on the ACT or ACT, provide evidence of industry-recognized post-secondary certification or license, have served in the military, or have successfully completed college-level coursework. Senate Bill 463 also allows districts to establish local criteria with board approval. Local developed alternative requirements for graduation that was developed in San Angelo ISD are, meets the performance standard on the semester final exam for the subject area needed to demonstrate proficiency, demonstrates a grade of 70 or above in the subject area needed to demonstrate proficiency, has attempted post-high school remediation and/or state assessment testing in prior years, and is provides any other academic work or life experience determined to be relevant by the local graduation committee. And even though these aren't and, 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 it could be either any of those four. Students that did not graduate and receive a diploma prior to 2011-2012 because of the state assessment need to contact the campus they last attended to request the award of, of a diploma. It is important to know that Senate Bill 463 is only effective until September 2019. The administration is recommending that the Board of Trustees approve the local alternative requirements for graduation and awarding a diploma for students that did not meet the state assessment requirements for graduation. Are there any questions?
Thanks, Shelley. Any questions for? I guess since it's just available till September of 2019, are we gonna publicize that in any way?
Yes, sir. As soon as you approve this, I will get with, um, Mr. Jackson and hopefully our reporter back there and we can, we can have a conversation and she can put it in the paper, Michelle.
Perfect, thanks, Michelle. Yeah, I think that's good and obviously it's a short window, so we want to make sure that everybody that's, hasn't been able to receive, you know, some certificate of graduation has the opportunity to do so based on what the state legislature wanted to accomplish. So, other questions or comments? If not, do we have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
We have a motion from Mrs. Maazel Flint and a second from Mr. Hernandez to approve the administration's recommendations for SASD guidelines for awarding high school diplomas to students who entered the ninth grade before 2011-2012 school year. Are there other comments or questions from our board team? Any public comment? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Thanks, Shelley. And hopefully those that are wanting to do that will contact us in due time. Our next item is to set a public meeting date and consider the approval of a maximum tax rate used for publication of that required tax notice. That date is, we're proposing would be August 27th of 2018 and possible motion language in this won't, the amount won't change, but the language could conceivably change, but it would be a dollar four for M&amp;O rate and 17 cents for interest and sinking fund. So, do we have a motion to approve, to set our date, to announce our tax rate on August 27th of 2018?
Motion to publish the proposed rate and to set the meeting date.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion from Mr. Dendel. Thank you, and a second from Mr. Gallegos. Are there other board comments or questions concerning that?
Mr. Lehman, is, this is an action our board takes yearly, is that correct?
Yeah, correct, yeah. We have to set the date in order to publish all the notices, so all that is, is just part of the process.
And also just a note to the public that these are the rates that we are currently at. There's no raise taking place from last year's tax rate. This is the tax rate that we were at last year. Is that correct, Dr. Bright? Just, yeah, we can't, we can't raise that without some sort of election or, or, yeah.
We can't go above this unless we republish.
Yeah, there you go. Yes, sir.
We have no intent in increasing it beyond where we are, so. We have no intent in increasing it beyond where we are, so. We've done all of our preliminary budget work and this provides us adequate funding for 18, 19. Any other board questions or comments concerning our public meeting date and our, the approval of a max, maximum tax rate issued for that publication? Any public comment? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is to consider bid number 18-019, which is for property and casualty insurance. And Mr. Henry's going to help us out with this. It looks like Dr. Bright may be willing to do so as well.
Thank you, Mr. Lehman. We spent a lot of time discussing this during pre-agenda, so we'll just kind of highlight where we've been. This is kind of a unique year, something the board hasn't had to deal with for a while because we've been under some renewal agreements for property and casualty insurance. But basically, what, what has taken place is we hired a consultant to put together a proposal for both property and legal liability insurance coverage. There's two, two coverages we're looking at here. First is on the property side. That would be for our buildings and the contents. Takes care of wind, hail, fire, those type of perils. Then on the second piece of this proposal is what I think people call liability or casualty insurance. And that can cover things such as cyber coverage, general liability, educator, legal liability. Plus, it also handles our vehicles. So there's, there's two components to this proposal. As we discussed in pre-agenda, we received a one, I'll call it a bid. One bid that took care of all of our property and all $400 million worth of properties. On, on the other side, we also had a proposal submitted from our current legal liability carrier, which is PCAT, who also offered us a proposal for property insurance. So as we discussed in pre-agenda, we really think at this point it comes down to a decision point by the board. Both are rock-solid proposals. We think that it comes down to, do we pick the carrier with the lower premium but higher deductibles? Or do we come over to the carrier that's offering a slightly higher premium but has lower deductibles? And Jason shared two, I think, really good examples of what could happen if we end up with a claim. And that is the, any savings we receive in premium are wiped out with one claim. So it, it's a, it's a tough situation for you. You, I don't believe you can make a wrong decision. Both groups, Texas Association of School Boards and PCAT, which is what we refer to as Edwards, they're the third-party administrator. We've had long-term relationships with both of them. I just don't think you can make a wrong decision. You're not going to find anything that sets one apart from the other. So maybe the deductibles at this point and, and maybe some service issues that, you know, we have experience with both of them. Service is, is great with PCAT. We haven't had to deal with TASB too much, but you know them covering over 400 schools in the state, that they're rock-solid as well. So at this point, we're, we're kind of putting the ball in your court, so to speak. And if you need any advice or discussion with us, we'll, we'll be really willing to step in. I know that since pre-agenda, you had a lot of great questions come up. And you did a lot of homework on, on the coverages. And we submitted all those questions to the carriers and, and they replied with answers. And if there's anything left out there that you still need answered, we just surprised Mr. Rick Edwards showed up and was here for any support y'all might need to answer questions if there are any more. So at this point, we'll stop right there and like to just hear your thoughts.
Jeff, is TASB the one with the higher deductibles?
Yes, sir.
And then the $50,000 per building, is that it?
Yes, remember, TASB, Texas Association of School Boards, their deductible on wind and hail is $250,000 plus an extra $50,000 for any building over 25,000 square feet. We showed you an example of a hailstorm hitting Central High School. That deductible will be $550,000. PCAT, Property Casualty Alliance of Texas, AKA Edwards, their deductible is $250,000 per occurrence, period. So there's $300,000 difference on one campus. It is approximately $150,000 higher. The other thing we talked about was, in the past, our coverage has been covered by two different entities. Our property insurance has been by the Fairley Group for the past three years. And our legal liability has been this past year with PCAT. One of the interesting twists to the TASB proposal is they said it's all or none. You could take that as being good or bad, however you feel about it. But TASB's all or none. So there's not any choice of separating the two coverages like we've had in the past.
Good question. Are there other questions?
Sorry, and I was pre-agenda, so I apologize. The, you mentioned a consultant, the consultant brought the TASB recommendation?
Yes, sir. Well, he brought the TASB proposal. And the interesting thing about that, Dr. Kingman, is, you know, we got it, we hired a consultant because we wanted lots of competition. We ended up with one. And a lot of that is because of the condition of the markets right now. We've talked to numerous school districts and did some reference checks. They are all struggling to get coverage this year. And when they are getting coverage, high deductibles, high premiums. I think we are lucky to get the deductibles we have because we just talked to somebody about Amarillo ISD who, who got hit with, first they were lucky to get a quote, then they got hit with a high percentage deductible. So, and we've heard that all over.
Other questions, Dr. Kingman? I know Max and Bill especially have done a lot of homework on this. So Max, you have any further questions?
Yes, I have some questions, or a couple of questions for Mr. Edwards if he can come up. Now, while he's coming up, I appreciate Jason and Dr. Bright giving us information all week. I was probably the one that was asking for the most information. Mr. Edwards, I'm Max Parker. How long has PCAT or Edwards been writing property and casualty insurance?
Been writing since the existence of PCAT since 2002. Prior to that, we were a service entity for Zurich Insurance for about 10 years. And then they decided to get out of the business, school business, anyway.
How many school districts in Texas does PCAT write the property and casualty insurance for?
150 schools all over Texas.
And I know one thing that the consultant was concerned about, just by saying that he had not been able to, to get certain information. But, and so I'll ask it and, and probably in a way that he wouldn't because I'm not going to be articulate enough. But if, if I understand right, that your retention or Edwards, we, if we have a storm or something that comes through San Angelo, we have a $250,000 deductible for our facilities. And then Edwards has a $250,000, $250,000 retention. And then it goes to reinsurance?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Do, if there was a major storm across the state, are you confident that Edwards has enough equity, I guess it's called member's equity, to be able to cover all your retentions for the schools that you would have before it gets to reinsurance?
Yes, sir. The reason, the spread of risk, you can see if, by looking at our reference list, you won't see a lot in West Texas. Our concentration has been Dallas, and you get one or two. So therefore, the spread from the valley to East Texas to Laredo, United ISD, we believe it's unlikely. They do some modeling of 100-year losses, 500-year losses. And the modeling would indicate we have enough equity, member equity, program equity, to cover any 500-year exposure the program might have.
You understand the reason we asked that is because we had a company, and I don't know, TAPS, is that what it was? That did not. And so we were fortunate that we didn't get in a real bind with that. But we're wanting to be, make, make sure we're careful that, that, that we have a company that has reinsurance and will have the equity to cover any of that. So you're, you feel like you're diversified enough that you're not going to get just wiped out by the hurricanes or something that's going to affect us being able to get our facilities repaired.
Yes, sir. And, and I would add to that is that our lower retention at 250,000 after your 250, so a total claim of 500 then goes to reinsurance. You'll find whether it be other carriers likely have not been able to negotiate as lower retention, therefore minimizing the exposure that the program, and the program's owned by the membership. And that's why you saw what happened to San Angelo in the prior program. And so we do pay more for reinsurance to buy down that deductible or the stop-loss insurance.
And the information that we received is that your reinsurance carriers are all A and best, A plus 15s, most of them, very large, very secure companies.
Yes, sir. 90% of them are, they're all A-plus up to A, 13 was probably the lowest A-plus rating to A-plus 15.
What, I know we didn't get any, the only other bid we had was TASB that was really a full bid. Are there other companies writing property and casualty in the state of Texas for school districts right now?
There are some that are selective. And there are some that, due to a bid process, can't access the capacity they need to provide the limits that, the 400 million-plus limits that you need to, they couldn't collaborate together to provide the limits that you need. And so somewhat through the process you went to, you limited yourself in looking at a total array of various providers. And I would tell you too, if you talk to the fully insured or you talk to Lloyd's of London folks across the ocean there, they would tell you school districts, because there's one in every little town, is a big business. However, they've had big losses. And if you look, you can look at Harvey and we can say it's because of other things. We have hailstorms. You can probably talk to your neighboring school district and ask them if they've had a hailstorm in the last 10 years. I would say, well, I know Marble Falls has, so you don't have to go too far from where I am. But likely, your neighboring school districts have had hail losses. You've been very fortunate here, either by God's grace or your good people, that you've not had any larger claims than you have. You've got great experience and why would somebody wouldn't want to have that? But they're blending that rate with all the other losses they've had.
Yeah, so for those that are watching this on our, our channel, TV channel, our rates are going up, but it's not because we've had a bad claims experience. It's just because of the experience across the state with, with carriers.
Yes, sir. You've got great experience.
So, question. The Edwards-PCAT is 250 per occurrence. That's multiple facilities? That could be, or is that?
That's the whole district.
That's the whole district?
That's the, if you have five campuses, 10 campuses, or one. If it were to exceed over 250 or a combination, let's say you had 100,000 on one campus, you had 50 in another, and you had another 100,000, 250 is the maximum you're going to pay for any one occurrence.
So that's aggregate for all buildings, whereas the TASB, if I'm reading this correctly, is 250 per facility, per building?
No.
250 for the currents plus 50,000 for additional buildings.
250 per building, so plus 25,000.
As I understand it, if we had a storm that came through and we were going to have to replace eight roofs at Central Campus, that with Edwards, we'd have a $250,000 deductible. With, with TASB, we would have a $250,000 and 50,000 for every building that's over 200, 25,000 square feet. We'd pay an additional 50,000.
Which we calculated to be $550,000.
On top of the, on top of the 250.
Yes.
But with each policy, if you had, Santa Rita Elementary hit and Central, they would be in the same 250?
Same occurrence, right. Yeah, same occurrence.
From PCAT, yes.
But in TASB, would be by the 25,000 per square foot?
Plus the central bill, the square-footage buildings, plus the square-footage buildings at Santa Rita.
Santa Rita, which we don't have any.
Which is another 50,000. But TASB did cap it at a million. You will never be out more than 1 million.
Yeah.
So, which is, or per occurrence. If you have two storms in one year, you get hit hard.
Which we've had, you know, we've been blessed, but we have had two storms in one year, so. Other questions?
Great to have the expertise of Mr. Edwards here, so hit him while you can.
How long, you, why don't you mention this also, Dr. Bright? Because I, I don't know, you mentioned some of it. But as far as our work experience with Edwards, what other insurance do we have with them and how long have we been using Edwards or working with Edwards?
We've had workers' compensation with Edwards Risk Management for as long as I can remember. And, and of course, they're, they're inter-local agreement. It's, it's a self-insured pool. And so it's a renewable, you know, you don't have to bid it out. It's renewed each year. So we've done that with Edwards. And then, like I said, last year, when TAPS filed bankruptcy, we were able to secure PCAT with Edwards Risk Management under our legal liability coverage and our vehicle coverage. And it has been first-class all the way.
One thing I'll point out to Dr. Kingman that we learned last week is that our cult, our consultant was somewhat concerned that if we went with PCAT that did not comply with the RFP by presenting information that was required with the RFP, primarily the financials, that that might affect us future with bid process. But it was also brought out that the consultant knew that Edwards, from prior experience, that that was not going to happen and did not tell our administrators that. So it's like we were, it, it's something that we, we, he would, if he'd have told us, we would have known that Edwards is going to be one of the few that would be bidding and would not follow the process. And that was not brought up beforehand. So I think that minimized the impact that, at least from my standpoint, that are my concerns about that.
And in a normal proposal process, we wouldn't even be talking about this. But since it is an inter-local agreement, it meets all the purchasing rules and laws that are out there. In fact, as we discussed, we, we didn't even have to put it out for proposals. We could have just went straight and got it. But we were really interested in knowing how competitive our proposals would be. And so I think we were very fortunate that PCAT came in and gave us a proposal. Or otherwise, we'd be sitting here with one option and no other option. As far as financials go, I know part of your concern was, are we getting into another TAPS situation where bankruptcy fell into play? We did some, some due diligence on our part and discussed some things, some reference checks without being prompted. And everything we got from people that we know, including members of their Board of Directors of PCAT and even Keller ISD, who's not a member of the Board of Directors. We visited with the Chief Executive Officer of North American Solutions this morning on the phone, on a phone conference. That was Jason, myself, and Jaime. Got to listen to them. Everything we get is that PCAT is in sound financial condition.
Any other questions, good questions? Mr. Edwards, thanks for being here. And again, I think, you know, Max has been very diligent in following up on this. So thanks for all y'all's work and answering all Max's questions. And I think most of the questions Max and Bill ask her have been very informative for the board team. So thanks for y'all's work, Dr. Bright and Jason, in following up on that.
Appreciate that.
And I do think in, in, you know, it's a tough decision because in light of where we were last year, you know, and, and, you know, we want to make sure that whoever we choose this year's, you know, not going to file for bankruptcy. And then we'd be struggling for, for them to pay claims, much like we would have been if we would have had losses last year. So are there any other questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Well, I'll make the motion. And it's, I agree with Dr. Bright. It's, it's, it's not totally clear the best way to go. And I'm, so most of the time, the board, we all seem to have unanimous opinions. And I, we may have a difference of opinions here because everyone needs to vote what they think's best. If we have a great year and we have no claims, it's, it would be best if we had a crystal ball that we would go with TASB because it would say- that we would go with TASB because it would save us about $150,000 in premiums. But if we do have a storm, and if there's any major storm, then I think we're gonna pay out less in deductibles with the PCAT and probably will end up having less payouts, even including the premiums with PCAT than we would with TASB. But I'm gonna make a motion that we approve Edwards-PCAT for our property and casualty insurance for the, for the 2018, 2019 school year.
Second. So, we have a motion from Mr. Parker. Thanks, Max. And a second from Mr. Dindel to approve PCAT as our property and casualty insurance group. And I would just kinda piggyback on Max's comments. You know, my, my opinion of insurance is that, you know, you, you get insurance for catastrophic-type situations. And, you know, if we have something that happens where we have multiple buildings, that it seems to me like that, that, that the TASB policy does not provide the coverage that, that PCAT does. So, it just makes, to me, even though the premiums are higher, it makes more sense because if we do have a hailstorm, that something as simple as a hailstorm could certainly make up all the money that we would save in premiums. And I would prefer that we, that we cover ourselves and, and make sure that, that, that we handle it that way. So, that's my opinion. So, any other comment or questions? Do we have any public comment?
I just wanna tell Jeff, thanks, Jeff and, Jason, my gosh. Just thank y'all for, for being patient with us because when, when y'all gave this to us last week.
It was tough. And I'm telling you, Jason's worked on this since November. So, he's done a lot of work.
Mr. Edwards, thank you for coming. We really appreciate that.
Yeah, I might wanna remind our administrative team that most of the time, they make recommendations to us rather than us making decisions. So, we appreciate.
How'd you like how we totally punted on that?
We, we appreciate the dilemma that y'all are in, but the, putting us in one doesn't make it any easier. But certainly, I think, you know, we have two outstanding companies, those that we've had a long-term relationship with. I, I, again, I stated my thoughts, sir, that, you know, it's, we have less risk, in my opinion, by approving the PCAT. So.
Sorry, I know the emotions are have been made, but one last question. The, as far as for the RFPs in future years, if we chose PCAT, that would be something we could renew each year or, whereas, and then, because it'd be in the inter-local policy?
Yes, being in inter-local, we can renew forever.
But we could bid it out to TASB, I mean?
We could seek closing. See, TASB is a risk pool, a self-funded risk pool as well. And they operate under inter-local agreements. But I think we want to know at least, at least know that the pricing is competitive.
Good question. Dr. Kingman, other questions? Anyone? Okay, if not, I'll call the motion. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Our motion passes. So, thanks again for all y'all's hard work on that. And the last thing I would hope would, for us to have some catastrophic loss. But we'll move forward and be insured for, and taking care of all of our buildings as we should do each year. Our next item is just to review our board meeting dates and activities. Does anybody have anything to add to that? I know I talked to Dr. Delloff about adding some of our reviews, some that we've previously had as far as maintenance, transportation, you know, things like that. And we'll probably need to find some slots in there, Becky, for, to get with Dr. Delloff. And maybe we'll have four or five of those throughout the year. We previously did that in some of our pre-agenda. I think it'd be good for us to hear. We have some new folks in those, in those roles, so it'd be good to hear from them and get to know them better and them get to know us better. So, I think that'd be a good idea moving forward. So, we might try to put through four or five reports that have been something we've done historically. That's the only thing I saw that I thought we needed to add. Anything else? If not, I assume we need a motion to approve those dates and activities of our board. Although it doesn't, it just says review and approve. So, we, if we're looking to approve it, I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve the calendar of annual board meeting dates and activities.
Second.
So, we have a motion from Mr. Lehman, a second from Mr. Parker. Do we have any other board comments or questions? Certainly, Dr. Delloff would, as we progress through the year, if there's things that come up, we can, we can address that as we move forward. Other board comments or questions? Any public comment? If not all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. That covers our agenda for this evening. Our announcement, sir, we have a safety and security workshop. That's next Monday. Yeah, on next Monday at 5:45. We also have our financing pre-agenda board workshop on August 13th. And convocation is scheduled for the Faulty Communications Coliseum, and that's August the 15th. Our regular board meeting, just because we don't wanna be bored in August, our regular board meeting is August 20th. And our special meeting to adopt our budget that we discussed earlier in our meeting agenda this evening is August 27th at, at 5:45. So, all of our meetings at 5:45 with the exception of convocation. And then I think there's a couple of us that are attending some other things that are going on in the district. So, we got a long-term planning. That's tomorrow and then the following Tuesday during lunch. And then we have a strategic planning session next Monday from 8:00 a.m. till 2:30 or so. So, y'all, those are board members who've agreed to participate in those. Please make sure you have those in your calendar, as I remind myself to do the same. So, is there any other board business that we need to take care of this evening? If not, I hear no objection. We'll stand adjourned.